Welcome to our January 5 meeting on the budget. Mr. Rere?
This is a slide that we use every year. It changes every year because in Rhode Island, school departments and municipalities can only increase their spending to a maximum of four percent per year. This slide here shows you what the local tax levy was for our current year, 2016. Multiply it by point four, and that generates, or that equates to $939,000 in additional spending. And based on Riide's decapitation of state aid, right now, we're projecting an additional $167,439 in state aid. So for 2016-17, whoop, I missed the button, sorry. There's $1.1 million that the school department could spend up to, or request in the budget process. Without going over the cap. And again, this is, we put up every year. It's just an explanation of the increase, how Riide asks for additional state aid. It's based on the funding formula, and it's attributed to increases in the number of students who are taught at the C3 or reduced to lunch, for the most part, because our, the other piece, based on wealth in the community, really doesn't fluctuate enough to generate any additional revenue. It's usually the reduced lunch.
And this funding formula, are these still level funding education?
Yes, the total amount of dollars.
And that's been true for how many years?
This is yours.
I'm not sure if it's fair to say the budget's level funded. I know, like, for the high cost spaces, it's been level funded, but they've, whatever the appropriation is, they run through the formula based on, we get our equitable proportion of the formula based on.
Right, and I was just wondering if, you know, in years past, they used to increase the total amount the state would contribute by two percent or whatever. But when they came up with the funding formula, they based it on not making any increases for 10 years, and I wondered how that has been.
I don't think that's been altered. What we use is, at the end of the calendar year, Riide usually gets some information from the State House, projecting education, and the number that Riide flies to the districts as well. So we don't have necessarily visibility to see the whole education budget, just from what they apply to us. So we're getting sort of, and we're solving the number that we want to.
But the formula was based on 500 million, right?
Yeah.
It's based on 500 million dollars in general aid to schools. Has that number increased? That's probably something we can ask the reps next week.
Right.
But the bottom line is, it's not like it was in the past, that they would just tack on.
Right. It used to go up three percent sometimes, and then it went down to two.
The total worksheet they provided was 772 million, which is an increase from 2016. So it does look like.
So Riide is anticipating some sort of total increase.
And again, it's, I mean, none of that's the legislature. Well, Riide asks.
Yeah, the legislature has to vote for it.
The legislature has to fund it.
They have to fund it.
Yeah. It's all predicated on.
Yeah, no, well, that's right. Again, when we do these, they're just that, they're projections.
Right.
We're, I think we're the earliest, we have to be one of the earliest communities.
We have to be, because of the 15th.
And I say this every year, but it truly is a projection. We're looking at it 18 months out from now, you know, back in June, it's two years. I mean, it's hard, but we do.
But Riide, it's not our estimate anymore, now it's Riide's.
Riide's asking what they're gonna ask.
About the state aid.
Right, for the state aid.
But what happens to the legislature, government knows.
Right.
Okay. The budget schedule, again, this is all dictated by town charter. January 15th, which is next week, we have to have preliminary budget into the budget committee. I don't believe they look at it, you know, like on the 16th, but by statute or by charter, we have to have it in. The March 20th, a few days prior to the FDR, we have to have our final proposal in. If the committee would like to put an optional budget to the voters, it has to be by April 15th. And then on May 21st, 2016, the FDR's, it's the third Saturday, and then, so that's the timeline we're under. And again, you know, that's well in advance of what state aid numbers are, you know, the budget process is really ahead of the funding.
The April 15th day is if we submit a budget that is different than the budget.
Budget committee, yes. Right, the budget committee gives us a number.
Is that the same date for an alternative budget by a?
No, that comes in after.
I've, no, the alternative budget, alternate budget, comes in after both the town.
That's the last one.
And the schools have submitted their.
Yeah.
I'd have to look at that.
Yeah, but that's the last one.
But I know it's afterwards. It's after the municipal, the municipal schools submit.
Not much after.
No, it's not much, but they, but it's the, basically, all the cards are on the table.
Yep.
And that allows voters, they wish for an alternative budget for. Here's our current projections for next year. We are looking pretty much at a, our population is pretty much staying the same at all three levels for next year. But it's the second year in a row where our population has plateaued out or leveled off a little bit, and that's reflected later in the budget proposal where we adjust our staffing levels based on our student population. Our first request that we submitted to the committee, this is a request that we had in the budget last year. I know Mrs. Wardell spoke, I believe, one or two meetings ago about the need for this position. It's to increase our remedial math position at Fort Barton to four fifths, which would provide Fort Barton the same level of service that local has and Ranger currently have.
And so do those schools also have a four fifth?
Yes.
And do we make, do we combine at all, or do we have three four fifths?
We would, if this proposal unfold, we'd have three four fifths. The schedules don't allow.
To have a one.
The share.
Right, like two full time.
Yeah, it doesn't, doesn't work that way.
We looked at that.
Doesn't work that way. It doesn't work out.
Because I imagine it's more difficult to get somebody that's.
We were very fortunate, we got a real good person this year for the two fifth positions to replace the teacher who had the job for a few years, went to a full-time position. So we were lucky to secure that, that person. And again, as you see the rationale, you know, we would be providing support to all 40 full students opposed to just one. And it was unfortunate that we had to cut it out of the budget last year, so I think it's certainly worthy of putting back into the budget. The next, we only have really two staffing requests for this year. I'm asking the committee to consider adding an additional full-time technology position, technician's position to the, into the budget. And as you can see, the amount of time that Mr. Tarianni has to spend, and he'll speak to this in a second, is being tied up more and more with state reporting and demands by the state for different reports and different kinds of information, which puts more pressure on our one technician that have to, in many cases, on a daily basis, we only have one person servicing over 1,000 pieces of hardware in the district. I spoke with Mr. Aruda a couple of weeks ago about this, I've talked to Al about it. I know our technology subcommittee has talked about, request, making this request, and I think it would be something based on our budget projections for next year, it's something that we certainly should consider adding to our budget.
One thing I would add to the rationale would be adding an extra person, also help the opportunities for training personnel as well. So with the one person only.
That's correct.
There's only, there's definitely no time to help train personnel. That's something that's been, obviously, I don't want to say lacking, but there's definitely a need for it, as we improve training for things, there's less opportunity for training.
Isn't that something we always talked about, was no matter how many devices we had, people weren't comfortable with them? That doesn't make any sense.
Yeah.
And when I watch other districts and they show their technology department, they roll it out, and there's five and six and seven.
As part of the needs assessment that I did for the, find out from our teachers where we are technology-wise, I mean, one thing that came through loud and clear was that they, that Al's department needed support in responding to their request to have things fixed, looked at, and it's certainly a priority. I mean, that was the one must-do out of the needs assessment that we set. This next, I guess it would be staffing, but it really would be, I don't know what kind of position it would be. But currently, this current year, as of tonight, we had 52 complaints regarding residency issues, 10 of which, after Officer Black did initial checking and, you know, making sure the data was correct, were 10 cases that he's investigating, which means he goes to the homes at night or the residence, you know, to see if they're there at night, see if they're there in the morning. And in order to do that, he has to take time away from his SRO duties at the school, because he's only logged at work a certain number of hours every day. I've talked to Chief Blakey about this, and he recommended that we consider putting money aside to hire a retired police officer, someone who's familiar, you know, doing investigations to help verify these residency cases, because they just take up so much time out of the SROs that. And I talked to the chief about overtime, and the way the overtime works in the police department is that if an officer's called in, you have to pay them for four hours, whether they work four hours or three minutes. So you'd be spending 100, I believe the rate's $160 for every time you call someone in. And this would give us more flexibility if we had someone on the team, essentially, to work with Officer Black, to do a lot of extra, like, so. Right now, we've had, Liam, correct me if I'm wrong, three, that we've sent letters to, that we've confirmed haven't looked at, so there's still seven. I mean, those three residents, yes.
So if, we would be hiring somebody part-time, and we would pay that person then per hour, we wouldn't have that four hour minimum?
That's correct, we would pay them.
So they could work two hours one night?
Yeah, or an hour.
Or one morning.
Or go out in the morning for an hour, note it.
I tend to think of it a lot more as really to hire a sort of contracted service and we use it as we need it, as we don't need it.
Yeah, we don't.
Oh, actually, so if we, right, so we may not spend.
Right, Liam sifted through the initial complaints, and he got it down to 10, where 10 needed more work that he couldn't verify. So that's what, that person would help with. So it's just, it's something, we used to have money in the budget years ago, but we had to cut it out.
Yeah, if you look, there's, we have a line item in our budget for compliance, and it has zero, this year, we put 5,000 as our recommended proposal for the next year.
But we used to have that person before.
Correct, and it was eliminated when the school resource officer was out.
What's our cost of people?
We're about 16, 16.1.
So if we spend 5,000 now, potentially, all 10 pieces of the scale are done, and save 4,000.
You could say considerable, it certainly paid for itself.
Right.
It's small money to get out. And it also gives us more latitude, because again, that person could go at any point during the day or at night, as opposed to Liam's kind of limited to one evening, though. Something to consider. Okay, and that's it as far as addition, you know, new staffing or, you know, new positions. If you recall back in June, it was, you know, we had some projections that weren't very favorable, but again, that was in June, and we went on the best information we had then. We've had significant changes to certain operational lines, which normally drive our increases. This year, for example, our health insurance only increased, and, you know, it seems like a lot of money, but it went up 102,000, we're projecting it to go up to 102,606. We originally thought it'd go up as high as 330,000.
And how far is that now?
If you recall, last year, we went at eight, and it came back 13.
Yeah, that's the worst.
So, but we're going with our his, you know, historical average.
Eight is our historical average, so we tend to use that each year.
So you use that early when you really don't know.
Right, because we don't have that data.
We even had declines a few years, and they were lower than the unfortunate last year.
And it was the hit.
That's what an average is intended for.
And again, this goes back to what I was just saying, this process is so early, it's the best information that we're gonna go with right now, and.
A couple of factors that we're gonna.
No, go ahead.
Normally, even at 8%, we'd expect to see a larger number than this, but we've got a couple of other things going on. If you recall during our constant range for negotiations, the co-pay is going up percentage for us, that's helping increase our health insurance cost. Another piece is retirees, as they become eligible for Medicare, fall off of our health insurance. We don't have a lot of retirees replacing those. That's another factor in our number, we know what we originally thought. And really, another factor is we're seeing a couple more buyouts than we had historically, so people are taking the health insurance. So those favorabilities have helped us on that line, which is a significant buyout. It's, you know, $3.3 million, so we did have a percent increase.
The next item, as has been well discussed, this is the transportation increase, the contract that we had, that we signed last spring.
And we deferred some of the increase, is that why we're getting a big bump this year?
That actually didn't, they weren't able to accommodate us in doing that, so we had a 5% increase built into that. The posts that we originally had ended up not being accepted to our transportation center.
They said no.
They weren't able to back into that.
So, again, in addition to the increase this year, we're gonna see this big increase next year, and how about the third year?
And it would be something comparable, because the.
Every year.
That was a big problem at the end, remember?
So the budget could really be fantastic, if that's the biggest line item. I mean, it's putting a lot of pressure on the budget this year. Had it not been for that, you know, the good news would have been better.
Special Ed, and down $150,000, that's primarily, you know, some additional backup data in the packets. This is due to the reduction in out-of-district tuition that have gone down, so we have a favorable there. Also, believe it or not, and I had asked a couple times, our state retirement, you know, we pay into all the different retirements, and you add it all up, it's in that savings that went down $50,000.
Just to go back to the big spend number for a second, our new portfolio number is very consistent from here, because the population doesn't vary that much. But I put a graph of our other district jurisdictions, and we can see it peaked in 2014, so we've had a decline since then. So this, we're kind of leveling off now, but this is kind of the, I think we've bottomed out now, and where we can anticipate a modest increase from this year going into next year, we've actually had a little bit of decline, so I'm optimistic that, that we can do some savings. I think six months ago, we had, it was about 150 increase that we're anticipating, now it's actually becoming savings.
And the important thing is everyone still needs to see what services they need.
Yeah, in this case, either the services are not as expensive as they were, or those students have turned 21, or moved off the district.
And we also brought students back, you know, to the programs, even though we had to hire a half-time teacher for the high school, one of our programs, that saved, I'm gonna say, seven or eight tuitions out of district. So again, more than paid for itself, and that's reflective. And back in May, that wasn't on the books, especially I hadn't gone that far out as far as the.
And was there any effect from the Portsmouth withdrawal?
Uh, no, because regionally, we stayed about the same, because what, the savings that we're experiencing is our, our savings. And also, we also reduced staff last year, if you recall, and this year, we're also gonna remain some minor reductions in that area, so we add it all up, that's the, that basically that overall reduction.
And then, next slide, state retirement numbers, it's interesting, sometimes we don't have that number, but heavily, probably, in fact, last year, we did have a number until July, but this year, they provided the numbers for next year, and there's a slight decline in our defined benefit plan, both certified and non-certified, so that's where we see that slight decrease from last year. I wasn't expecting six months ago for that, we didn't expect that.
All right, so, I'm sorry, sorry, do we have any contracts for purchase services, or like the bus, you know, transportation, anything that's coming up in the next six months that we can somehow anticipate potentially going up, or, we sort of got blindsided by that.
Now, we're in good shape, we have, you know, three more years of the bus, so there's no variable.
The only variable would be the health insurance.
We've locked into our utilities, which is, we normally have a high fluctuation where our natural gas, electricity is locked in, for year to year with the heating oil.
But we just did that.
So we're good for this heating season, so that shouldn't affect the next six months, so there really isn't anything. The big unknown is really health insurance, other than that, we're pretty confident that we have a membership portion of that.
And there is another one I'll add, someone goes on our website, is oil and natural gas went down 105,000. So.
We locked into the rate for natural gas a few weeks ago, and our heating oil, we think, at $102, which was a pain in the butt.
So, as a, as a result of meeting with my principals, primarily, I spent most of my time with Lori and Steve, because the elementers are pretty much almost maxed out. But we went through the schedules in our projected enrollments for next year. We believe we can still offer, I won't say, but would these reductions still provide a very high quality education for our students? At the highest, I'm recommending the following reductions, one position in English, three fifths, family consumer science, there are only 60 students right now, and we have 10 sections of classes that wasn't in a full-time position, it's not students there. Math, one position, PE, one fifth of a position, science, three fifths, social studies, two fifths, and world language, one fifth. And it's simply trying, we will be increasing class size to where I think they should be right now with some of the classes that are very low in the digits, and this will bring another difference.
And are these all full-time positions that are now being reduced to part-time, or some of them are part-time?
Except, I'll back up, but, family consumer science is full-time, so it will be reduced by three fifths, two fifths. PE, we'll start with English, start at the beginning, English, we're expecting a retirement will not fill that position.
And so, just, how will that impact students? And does it mean, like, instead of two sections of 10th grade honors English, we're only gonna have one?
Just on the other end, our preparatory classes will have some extra, won't affect honors. For example, world language, we have an AP, Spanish, and two honors, and, but, it's like six and one, and seven and another.
The honors.
Yeah, so you just have one. You still have the hon, I mean, we're not eliminating him, there's nothing to be eliminated. It's just, we're simply consolidating the sections, so that, you know, you have these, you know, again, what I call these sort of numbers to. PE is a full-time position.
And is that the new one that we just added this year, that next year that will?
We have, we will be hiring a new hire, but it's not a new position.
But that new hire thing would be fourth, fifth, sixth, next year?
Yes. Because that person would be the junior position person.
Can you tell us a little bit more about, it's like a little, I guess, questioning of, at the beginning, that, and the English position? So where are we consolidating, more specifically about the grade levels?
Yeah. Actually, I wanted to bring that up. I had a comment on the previous slide of our number, we mentioned the school lunch program, $45,000. That is, so in fact, that's basically what we've been subsidizing the school lunch program the last few years, so I recommend it was put as part of our operating budget, so we don't have to take that off, I don't know if that equation matters.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look at that.
Because I'm not anticipating, although we're doing fairly well, but I'm not anticipating that.
Simply, in math, we have classes, we have two sections of Algebra I, with a total of 20 students.
Oh, two sections of full of 40.
Yeah.
So an average of 10 for a class.
Right. That's just one. There's another Algebra I, with five students. Algebra I, wow. English, English, E, one class, nine in another, nine in another. I mean, the numbers are such.
This is purely a moving from single digits to the.
Low teens.
Low teens.
Yeah, so it's not, it's not going to be long.
Very, I don't think there's any cases where it'd be more than 20.
We wouldn't do that, so we make it.
Like you told, we say that by max, with maximum efficiency, it's 21, it's, yeah. Any more than that, you start to get depression.
Exactly.
Science, I'll go back to Carol's question to answer, I'm on this one, yeah, PE, science, it is a full-time position, can reduce by three fifths, by three fifths. Social studies can be reduced by two fifths, and world language, that's a part-time position, it's currently three fifths, not two fifths. Better, at the middle school, because we eliminated the BSP program, we've blocked students, we're eliminating one position entirely. World language, that two fifths, position is currently being taught by a retiree, and those positions, those classes can be consolidated by our current staff that we have full-time.
So at the middle school, our numbers are the same, and students, they don't have the choice like at the high school. So it's just that this year, we have very low numbers in those world language sections?
Again, going back, if you go back to the enrollment, the enrollment's been pretty much the same for at least for last, this year and for next year, and the numbers are such that we can, yeah, they were, to answer your question, yes, they were low.
And is this, even with this, we will still offer the Portuguese, the Spanish, and the academic Spanish?
And academic Portuguese.
Okay, so it's not, doesn't create issues with your schedule, you think you can accommodate all the students?
Since we added academic Portuguese, and Señora Viela, she has, will expand, trying to anyway, expand that language.
Oh, so some of the shift has happened because of that?
Shift from Copertilla Spanish to academic and Copertilla Portuguese.
The total salary savings, as we've already separated, the salary savings alone is 331,000 or 92. Again, back in June, this wasn't even on our radar, so this, we're planning for next year for the schedule, so.
So the fourth thing to note about that number, if you look at our three-page summary of budget, our salary line is barely moving, it's only going up because of the proposed technology position. So basically, this is funding any increases that have been negotiated in the world's number of salary line, which is pretty unusual.
Are these positions being eliminated out of retirements, or people of age, or?
Out of efficiency.
No, 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 I understand that part, but the actual people that are.
There's only one retirement.
Okay. So.
So. There might be two. They might get one in science, which means we wouldn't have only that person driving them around. Right now, we're only aware of one retired.
So my position is eliminated, full-time position. Is the most junior person, automatically?
By the unpassable effect of whatever is needed by the.
That's the housing. We do have, and this really takes up most of our new spending requests, is several thousand, $1,000 worth, hundreds of thousands of dollars that were the increases. At the district, I divide it up really by level, big global picture.
There's actually a summary of all the technology requests in the package, if you want to follow up. So all of these technology requests are, the recommendations, they come out of our fund balance, and they total about $270,000. So.
You ruined the surprise at the end. What the total cost.
We know this guy, right?
But the five people in the audience. District-wide, Al's requesting software deployed patches remotely, which help fix software problems, now functions, switches, and he can explain what the switches are, because I kind of understand it, but I'm sure he can. Service storage unit and backup batteries for our servers to adjust the buildings. Al, can you just explain what the switches do or what they are?
All the wire that you see in the classrooms, it pulls back to the switches. That's basically the backbone of the network. So that's how all the connectivity, aside from our wireless, any devices that are plugged into a wall, go back to the wire, and the wire goes back into the wired classes.
So how many of our computers do we now run off the wireless, say Chromebooks, as opposed to five years ago, it was all wired desktops?
With the exception of the 100 laptops we have with the Champlin Foundation grant last year, vast majority of our equipment is still wired.
Is still wired.
And the request, that's what we're trying to get away from.
The laptop carts that we did have, that were hooked up to like an access point on the cart, now we're not connected to that, we're connected to the overall wireless, but the vast majority, I would say off the top of my head, you're talking of approximately 1,000 devices, I would say about 200 connect wireless then, 250 maybe, and the remainder are.
Are still wired, yeah.
So the technology isn't working. Here we go. Another $10. Another $10. Was the federal government, $5,000. Oops, jumped up. Sure. Rule one, know how to use the technology. At the high school, we're asking to place, the first one is a replacement, 25 PCs in our instructional lab, which is used by a career head department upstairs. We also would like to purchase six laptops to be used by our math and science teachers. And can you explain what that could be?
Sure. As part of the grant we're participating in through IBECC, our science and math department received ErgoBots, small GPS programmable devices, which we plan to use across the science and math departments. And they're, works best when each group of students has a laptop to use to program their own little GPS robot. They'll be using it to learn all sorts of things, force motion ratios, velocity, in a hands-on way. And so, as those ErgoBots travel across classes, the laptops should travel with them, like a little lab set, so that the groups of students can use them as an application in algebra, physical science, and physics. Thank you.
The third item kind of speaks to kind of what Carol was just mentioning. I believe, and I haven't talked to, I've talked to Al, I haven't talked to the tech committee, but we need to get away from, in my opinion, away from the PCs and purchase laptop cards. This would be the first ask this year, and next year, we would ask for the middle school for the same, just to get us started. I believe we should have laptop cards available, and if we have the money, I put world language in there as well. But to have the laptop cards available for each department, so teachers could sign them out like in the old days, they'd sign out overheads or VCRs. This would allow teachers, instead of having to take their kids to quote labs, the classroom is the lab, and they would just take the cards and use them and make use of our Wi-Fi here in the school, instead of, again, using up classroom space for those rooms to then be reutilized for other areas or other spaces we used it in. So I'm recommending for this year, that we purchase four laptop cards for English, math, science, and social studies. At the high school, for next year, I would be here willing to ask for the same for the middle school, for their four content areas. So we have equity. We already have these laptop cards, we'll just see in a minute. We're asking to replace the ones that we have at elementary schools, because they pretty much run their course. So this is just, and I haven't even seen, you know, the tech committee still working on their recommendations, but this is something that I strongly urge just to go in this direction.
And this was.
Really a first baby step.
This was priced with how many units per cart?
24L or 25?
25.
25, and what are you looking at? Are you looking at Chromebooks? You're looking at?
Yeah, what did you price?
These are, these are actual laptops, Dell laptops. This is modeled after the 100 laptops that we see through the Champlin Foundation grant at the middle school for the science laptops. We basically are using the same exact, same cart, same lab.
How long have you had those? Just a few months?
I believe it's been almost, almost a whole year now.
Oh, okay. And it's worked out well, so you?
Very popular.
Teachers and students like them?
Yes.
For the middle school, we're kind of putting the cart before the horse, because we haven't brought forward programming studies yet for next year. But we have talked about wanting to expand project lead the way into the middle school. We'd like to purchase 25 computers to be used down there for next year, along with a printer for that program.
Mr. Rude?
Yep.
Thanks. Just want to point one thing out, in case you have questions, I look at the numbers. You'll notice we're buying 25 PCs at the high school for the instructional lab there. And so we're buying 25 computers, PCs for Project Lead the Way. There's a difference in pricing, because the units, the PCs, computers for Project Lead the Way, have a very specific, defined set of hardware specs. It's a, the requirements are much, much different, so that's why they cost more for those units. This way, later on, when you look at comparisons, there is a reason why there's a difference between those two levels.
To finish up, the request for the middle school, we would like to purchase two additional LCD projectors for our two art classrooms, also two iPads for the art department, and purchase 32 Chromebooks for the math department. The Chromebooks will be used by our math teachers as well as our support staff to help. You want to, let me?
Oh.
I heard you.
Sorry.
I don't have a little ear bug in my ear. Go ahead.
The intent is that they'll be used to, for students to receive intervention and practice their math skills, so they can get up to fluency and independence.
Our remedial math teachers will be using specific apps that they would like to use. Also, Tarsor, twice back, we also will use our Star assessment for math, which they use as Chromebooks. So that's the middle school request. For Barton, actually, all the elementars are pretty straightforward. We'd like to replace teacher laptops, PCs with laptops, and purchase 25 PCs for the lab in the library. Again, it seems just like yesterday, but it's.
Eight years?
It's eight years by the time we open. So they run their shelf life, it's pretty much, it's coming to an end. And we'd also like to purchase three PCs for the study nurse and secretary. And these are, goes on for all three schools. So we have equity in Ranger, so we'd like to get, you know, ask them for every, all three things, kind of like Christmas.
You can also see why an extra person would help.
Yeah.
For the little PC to have the thing installed.
And again.
Although hopefully they'll be having many fewer issues because they have new equipment added than they.
Because these, these are all replacements. There's very few new purchases that we just talked about.
Yeah, there's many additions.
Yeah, and again, the total amount, it's a lot of money, $269,675, the hardware and software. It's our recommendation that these requests, as they happen in the past, pay for out of our fund balance.
That raises an interesting issue.
Yep, go ahead.
We typically wouldn't see an amount this large in any one year if we put a little bit aside each year for capital. And we typically haven't done that. We funded most of our capital out of fund balance. We did finish, we're not asking the relation, but we did finish with a sufficient balance to cover these expenses. So I'm comfortable in recommending that this come out of the fund balance without really decreasing our previous fund balance. But going forward, probably we would want people to put a smaller amount to shield the capital, so you don't have the plateaus and expenses.
We will, we will be able to pay for this request, as well as the $570,000 repairs of the buildings, the middle school and high school. We can still have a reasonable amount left in fund balance. But because we haven't, it hasn't been officially released yet.
Yeah, that will be soon, I think.
Hopefully, we'll have it for next year, with announcement, release of, next Monday.
And as far, as far as the technology goes, all through the years, I kept asking, I see what other schools are doing, and I'd call Mr. Rarek, and why don't we have this in virtual land? He said, we don't have the capacity. Then Ry gave us one thing, thank God, was the Wi-Fi. I wasted a lot of money on testing, won't go into that, but they gave us the Wi-Fi. And then I said, well, why doesn't that still work? And then they started talking about switches, and I'm like, oh my God, switches, whatever we need, please, we need it now, we needed it yesterday. And I think this is an amazing proposal for all the schools. Thank you.
And we do have the VHS, again, in the budget, some of the operational side. The increase, we went that way, it's only $4,000 for the students.
Virtual learning.
Virtual high school. But we're also, we'll be reporting out at our next meeting. Ry has asked for districts to see what their interest is in participating, not only in virtual high school, a virtual high school setup, where one high school was offering something that you didn't offer, your students could sign up for it, but they want to expand beyond that, they want to have the students be able to go to these schools, as well as possibly a VHS component. We have submitted our letter of intent that we're interested in it. I don't know where it will take us, but I felt, and we'll have more details for you, but it's possible we might not need the VHS piece in our budget, but it's such a small number.
But it was good to keep, just in case.
But I put it in the budget, because I don't know what Ry's, what that final thing's going to look like.
So when you're saying the VHS, you mean virtual high school?
Virtual high school.
All right. And the.
Right. That's, we're going to be asking for that ourselves, for the high school for next year, to be able to get 10 seats for kids to take AP classes.
Okay. And because that's a recurring expense, we feel that into the operating budget.
Right.
But you didn't mention it.
No, it's because it's such a small, it's just.
Oh, right.
But it's, we put it back.
Okay.
And because we are, because Ry also came up, it's coming up.
So it's like.
Also, we don't quite know what it looks like, so the arrows.
But thank you for applying, just in case you can use it, because if you miss the deadline, you're done, you know?
We may say we can't participate, we don't want to, but once it's done, we might go off. But if it could, if they can replace that VHS piece, they can save us some money, you know, where our kids can, or we could offer classes, you know, a class that someone else has to offer.
That's like, how does that work?
It was 10 months, and Alex down was a question.
Alan with four?
Yeah, they gave us a price of $4,000.
For the same number of students?
Yeah.
Prices down.
They wanted to give us a five-year contract, we don't sign five.
Can, does that restrict the course offer to you?
No, just the number of seats. No, and we wanted to start small, to see, to see what it was, kind of what a Germany. And ideally, it would be, again, I'll use my own experience, to take classes, just not AP classes, but like an international finance class.
But I'd rather have it more.
You know, they eventually expand it out to just more, different types of.
Opportunities, right?
Yeah, programming class.
Plus you've got a smaller school.
Code, how to write code, things like that.
Do we have a sense of student interest or?
That's why we wanted to start, you know, a real tiny. Obviously, if we got 25 kids, we'd find money to, you know, get the extra seats, but I think it would.
Yeah, it was the backwards.
Yeah, I think it would be best to start as small. And we built it into operations, so it's there. So, budget, and we'll go over the three pieces, we'll look at the folks in the audience. Our 2016-17 budget increase represents a 0.6% increase from this year. It reflects only operational expenses, as they have in the past few years, because we paid for our capital and technology purchases out of our fund balance. This proposed budget, if it was approved tomorrow, it was a zero increase to the tax base for 2016-17.
Probably should elaborate, because it's due to the state.
Yeah, due to the state. I was just going to say. Well, the increase is covered by the state. So there's no.
That 100 increases.
130 less.
So I don't recall that happening in past.
I don't ever.
We have, we basically level on the local side, and we don't really feel like there's too much state leading increase.
We also provided the committee here some backup documents. If you have any questions about that, we can answer them now.
The summary I just handed out, if you could, for a second, it shows our 10-year history of where our appropriation has been. And over 10 years, our average increase has been 2%, 2.1%, and over the last three years, it's been 1%. So I think we've done a pretty good job of keeping that number as low as we can, so I just wanted to show this to the committee, and we'd be happy to put it on those sites for everyone that's interested in this.
It's also a big point to note, I think, you mentioned that question for a less percentage increase than last year.
That's correct.
By a lot more.
That's correct. Yeah, I think we went in at 1%.
That's right.
Mr. Rude, I'd just like you to talk a little minute about that enrollment versus teachers job, because that's something out in the community we hear a lot about. I just want everyone to know, every year, we address that, every year, and you look at it, and you address it. It's not like all the kids leave and you keep all these other teachers, because every single year, you look back and address it, even though it's a difficult thing to do.
We had a couple of pieces supplemental information, the one Miss Black is referring to, shows, shows our history of our enrollment of teachers since fiscal year 2007.
Back in '07, for those folks at home or in the audience, we had 200 teachers, we had enrollment of just over 2,100. And for, as of last year, we had 1,870, 1,570 students and 178 teachers. Our enrollment dropped 11.9% over that from '07 to 2015, and the percent of teachers dropped 11%.
So we've kept right in case of that.
And that number will be higher, because we haven't calculated.
That's not with this year's.
So there's been a pretty consistent relationship between our people who see enrollment and teachers, and the other supplementary, supplemental schedules are our districts.
Right, because there's been some noise made, people who aren't part of this school department, don't support this school department, saying that we don't cut our staff and go and stuff. The data simply doesn't show that. And the data that Mr. Fiore just mentioned, the spending of 2% over 10 years, and 1% over the last three states, to the job that everyone's doing. Maybe, and that was interesting. Maybe, and that's a percent.
The only other piece of information we have in the package was the uniform charter accounts. If I have any questions, we would do that. Internally, we went through it, the fluctuations, primarily versus our suburban cohort, as well as the state, and a lot of those variations, we're aware, obviously, whatever dollar there is, but a lot of the concerns and questions are either addressed or have to be addressed.
First of all, I'm going to interrupt him. The most recent is 2013, '14.
Right, that was the, that was the big disappointment, I realized that doesn't--
Right, so the changes that we made this year, aren't reflective here, however, however--
It's still a challenge, we can use statistics of our--
You know, when you look at face-to-face teaching, we're slightly above, while we adjusted that, or we're trying to adjust it, the staffing recommendations. You look at pupil support number 21, we're a little low there. I'm sorry, hi, I'm looking at teacher support, sorry, 22. That's going to be an extra PD day in year three of the contract. That's what that line represents, kind of brings us up. Our added district obligations are the net school, special tuitions--
And actually, that's, if you look at this, we're looking at 14 data, 14 is what we keep, just expect, so that number should become--
So that number will come back down, you know, once everything catches up. So overall, I mean, we've met, you know, the areas for math and the science, we hired coaches, again, it's not reflective in these numbers, because--
They're two years out today.
They're still two years out.
Now Doug, when did, I assume you already submitted to the state our numbers for '15, '16?
Oh, yeah.
And so why does it take the state two years to provide us?
In the essence--
'15 is an example. We in any district submit, you know, soon after the year end, unfortunately, they can't compile the state data until everyone's data is in. So until that last community sends their information in, they don't want to release any of the information, so you're sort of at the mercy of any community that has--
But I also, if anyone could answer that, I'd give them $20, because I don't know why.
We've got the deadlines, and you meet the deadlines, and then--
We know what our numbers are, we've got a big computer--
I think it was something two years out today.
Well, you said, why does the, you know, why does the state, it ends, begins, and ends there? State. So that's our, that's our--
Good job.
We'll be, just, you know, next Tuesday, the committee needs to vote officially, and I'll definitely be back then, and we'll submit it, we'll go to the budget committee the next day. Enjoy the weekend.
I think we've covered most of the items on the free page.
Just don't ask a question, don't--
And Deb's not here, because she--
Yeah, so I said, Deb's not here, so just wait till next Tuesday.
We'll revisit this as appropriate.
I'll save my--
Pause that.
Do you have any questions? Go ahead, Deb.
In conjunction with the audit, it will be discussed at the next meeting and the meeting after that, we are going to have a fund balance that the superintendent and I have were considering dedicating part of that to a full head, which is the other post employment benefits. The trust has set up a program for members of which we are one, that they will handle the administration and management of money that's set aside for full head benefits. So what they're doing is, at our request, they will come in and do a brief presentation on what their full head program looks like, so I want to engage the level of interest from the committee to see whether or not we should schedule a trust coming in for that type of presentation.
Listen to them.
I think it would be, you need to see what--
See what they say, yeah.
And then, and then we'll talk about it. We believe this will be enough, if I can make it work. They have lots of sense.
Any questions from anyone else? Anyone in the audience? No questions? No? Any of the staff?
They don't have one.
Mr. Rarick. Okay, then do I have, any questions?
We have our phone numbers.
Yeah, that's right, I'm not in, we'll be in the hall, but--
It's all right, you take all our calls.
Any questions?
It's a joke, not a joke.
Yes?
Can I ask it from here? Any more?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Diane Farnworth, I know a number of you do.
I just have a couple of questions, I was doing my very best to listen, and I have to be honest with you, it was difficult from back there, these are not microphones apparently for amplification purposes. But I did, I do thank you for a thorough introduction to the budget. Question, couple of questions, one has to do with the technology request. I think I heard that much of the technology increases are going to be requested out of a fund balance, and not out of the operational budget, is that correct? Did I hear that right?
Yeah, typically, what this committee's done for the past few years is any capital expenses, we've taken out of our fund balance, and that way they're not built into our operating budget.
Things that you purchase once.
You purchase them once, but with technology, we're, you know, as we're in the 21st century, we're replacing these things on a very regular basis.
Right, I don't know if you heard at the end of our discussion, I said that going forward, it probably would be more prudent to build in a portion of capital in our operating budget, so we don't have spikes in it like we're seeing this year.
I agree.
So going forward, we'd like to try to implement that, but--
Okay.
Because we did have a successful year in 2015, we are going to be able to fund these computers out of, out of our surplus.
That's fantastic. And then the next question I had was with regard to the bus line item. I, I know Mr. Rarick, I had emailed you several months back, and I kind of dropped it, the whole thing, but is there any thought to maybe adding services for after-school busing, for late buses for the high school, and incorporating it into the budget?
No.
Okay. Is there any appetite for finding out if there is a need for that, for purposes of after-school programs, meaning sports, bands, tutoring?
I could ask, is that, yeah, I could ask, is that to send email to high school parents?
I know there are a number of kids who do stay after school, and I'm thinking that there would be the opportunity for more, to get even more involved at the high school?
We have plenty of time to adjust the budget, so I can talk to Steve about that.
Okay, all right, great, thank you, that's all I had.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I went to your yacht sale, didn't I? I did, I did, I did, and I bought a hat, too.
Can't find that anywhere. I went to--
It was fabulous.
Move to a turn?
A little favor?
Yeah, they say nothing good happens to you.